Alright, I'd like to call the meeting to order if everyone could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, I'd like to welcome everyone and thank everyone for coming. The first thing we need to do is to approve the meeting agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Five point zero is community comments. Community comments is an opportunity for the public to address the school board on a school-related item in accordance with the guidelines printed at the end of the agenda. The agendas can be found over there and we don't have anybody signed up for community comments. So we'll just go right into six point zero, student highlights. Student highlights. I don't have anything written down.
I have, uh, just today, um, just today Ms. Melissa Ober took down her Unified Group and they went bowling. And they took on other Unified Groups in Duluth and their, their team name are the Cool Cats. And they came back with a first-place trophy. So the kids are all fired up. They have a bunch of kids in the Unified Club and then they have some high school students who went and helped out as kind of mentors. Really great experience. We have some cool pictures posted, but yep, they came back with the big first-place trophy. And so, I want to give a shout-out to Ms. Ober and to that team. They did a fantastic job.
Great, congrats to them. You saw a couple pictures.
Yeah.
Yeah. Great. Okay, seven point zero is to approve the consent agenda. Is there anything from the consent agenda? Somebody would like poll for further discussion? If not, I need a motion to approve.
I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Okay, eight point zero, discussion action items. Eight point one, Common Ground Summit update presented by the Diversity Committee members Emma Spoon and Amanda Beal. Hi.
Hello.
Hi.
So, I'm Amanda Beal, if we haven't met formally already. High School English teacher this year. Emma Spoon?
Uh, yes, Middle School Science.
Yeah. Um, so our Diversity Committee has been meeting every other Thursday pretty regularly. Have a variety of staff members that come and participate. We'll have a final meeting before break tomorrow too. So, we encourage all of our staff to show up and give us feedback on this and help, yeah, move this along.
But we're coordinating it otherwise, so we're trying to head it up and putting some extra time in behind the scenes when the committee's not meeting to move it forward.
Yeah. Um, oh yeah, go ahead.
I can start, yeah. So if, um, we have created a mission statement that is the, I would say this is the behind-the-scenes mission statement that we're sharing with staff as a guiding doctrine to start us out. So saying, "We seek to inspire curiosity in our students by connecting curriculum to the community." And I will say, "We do that every day, all the time, but we're doing this more intentionally." And so we kind of built it around those four Cs. Curiosity, community, connections, and curriculum. With the goal that staff can take that in many directions and decide how that looks in their curriculum and their classrooms. But just with intentionality, we want the Common Ground Summit to be all about students appreciating their role in the world and then how the content they're learning in a classroom applies to the bigger picture and world as a whole. And to each other as peers and in any form of connecting.
Absolutely. Um, so the new structure for this year that we're implementing, we wanted to really change it up. That was part of the reason Megan Rebalki wanted to hand this off, is she really wanted to see this evolve every couple of years so that it didn't become stagnant. So we're really excited about this. Admin seems to be excited as well and so do most teachers, just about everybody we've talked to. So what we're doing is changing it from being a one-day standalone event. We're creating a project-based learning, yeah, project that'll be embedded into the curriculum and classes. So what, why we're doing that is in response to the criticism that it was just a one-day event. Kind of felt like, maybe we got that feedback that, yeah, if it's just one day, you know, even though like we said we do this all the time with our students, that it's kind of like a celebration of one day and we kind of forget about it. So we're hoping to be more intentional and have that show up daily in our classes. So, um, what we're asking of teachers is to either develop or modify some of their existing curriculum that's standards-based, to help students create, well, to reflect the Common Ground Summit principles that Emma went over and then to create some sort of tangible project at the end that's also interactive for students and the community, actually. So we want to create a product that celebrates who we as a student body, who our students are, as a student body or as a local or global or even international community are. Like we said, we really want to inspire that curiosity connection among our students. So we want them to look at what they have in common on those scales and create that project that can be displayed and shared with other students and community members. So after students have gone through and kind of done this project, which could take anywhere from a day to an entire unit, it's really up to the teacher and what they feel comfortable implementing in their classes. Classes will be partnered up appropriately, we'll be scheduling that in early April and we'll have two different classes together and they'll just do a mini presentation and say, hey, here's what we've been doing in class and get to share that with students of similar grade levels or different content areas and we're really excited about that piece. And then finally, this will all culminate on April 22nd. We're going to have the afternoon set aside where we'll set up all of the projects that our middle and high school has completed in a common space. We're still trying to figure out those details and have teachers and students come down and look at everything else that everybody else has done. And then that'll bleed into a free community dinner that we'll provide where we'll invite in students and community members and parents to come and see all the wonderful things our teachers and students have been doing, so, yeah.
So we've been rolling this out over the last six weeks or so in our professional learning communities. On Wednesdays after school, we've been traveling to introduce this in small groups. So we're seeing five or six teachers at a time, sharing our ideas and getting a lot of good feedback. So we, what we've been sharing with teachers is that our goal is that every teacher implements one project in one of their classes, because we all teach more than one prep at the middle and high school levels. We can pick as middle school teachers, whether it's six, seven, eight. As high school teachers, whether it's a ninth-grade introductory level, an AP level, or one of their elective classes too. And that they then take in a unit that they think already might connect naturally to have these intentional principles added. And then to implement that project in one or more of their classes and to prepare students to participate in these interactive class-to-class presentations.
Perfect. So the timeline or the student involvement of this is that, of course, the goal is that every sixth through 12th grader is involved in at least one of these projects. We'll work behind the scenes. We have a whole document ready to make sure that every student gets hit, ideally with, among their electives.
At least one of their core classes.
Yes, one of their core classes. And then maybe with the addition of elective teachers that are participating, they'll be able to participate in more than one. And then just on an aside, we're hoping that we are able to continue this for the next couple of years, this format, if it's successful. So then, you know, kids will get to experience this in different core classes. Maybe it's science freshman year, but it's English sophomore year and they'll have something to look forward to then each year. So other student involvement, they'll of course participate in the creation of the project. They'll present the project to another class in that early April timeframe. And then in April, they'll visit the Common Ground Project Fair and they'll complete an interactive viewing guide and reflection so that we can see what they got out of it, so.
Yeah. And then our timeline is just listed at the bottom. Because we were starting this brand-new, we've spent the fall kind of building the structure, introducing it to our staff and then trying to keep it, give staff plenty of time that, so they can find a natural time in their curriculum between January and March where there's a topic that they think fits. So it's not, we're learning all about this topic, stop. We're going to do this Common Ground thing and then we'll return to what we were doing. We want it to flow more naturally, so that's why we're introducing it in November. And now December's going to be time for teachers to be mentally even just thinking about it. We're going to have a workday in January on a professional development day and then be checking in with teachers over that next month or two. And by early April, be ready to that presentation stage so that a couple of weeks before that project fair, classes are sharing and then ready to have it go public.
So that's what we have for you as far as updates go. Do you have questions about any of that? We know it's a lot.
And we did throw, there was, just to mention this. Megan Rebalki shared this project, her statistics project she had done. This was not as a part of any Common Ground, but she thought of this one when we were brainstorming and thought how this is a natural example of a project that could fit into existing curriculum and just be explored in an intentional way.
Yeah, I really like the idea that it's not one day, that it's more of a role in the curriculum. But I'm, if you could, if you could talk a little bit more, the, originally these were about diversity and, you know, trying to, you know, introduce students to a lot of different ideas or people or points of view. Is that, I don't see that necessarily written in your principles or, so I'm just trying to understand. Is that still the focus?
Um, I think we can say, this has come up, this exact question has come up a lot from our teachers who are concerned about that same issue. I think, if I can speak for both of us, the approach that we're kind of taking this year is almost a step back to be able to take a bigger step forward in the future. And so, in our conversations, we've encouraged teachers, absolutely, this is, this is what we'd love to see you exploring. Like this is still about, that's why I keep focusing on that, what we have in common. Exposing students to things that are different from them, but finding those commonalities. So, yes, did that answer your question?
Yeah, I just wondered.
Yeah.
It was, the, the language around it, the description was very different.
Right. Right, absolutely.
And not just an approach, but just a new content, so.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Did you, did you have that?
No, I just find it incredibly ambitious and I'm just really proud. I mean, our teacher, everyone's going to, we're doing this for our kids, so.
Yes. Yeah, and along that same topic that you had just asked about, some teachers right away are, you know, gun-ho like, going back to that social justice topic from the first year, like this is, I, this fits perfectly. I'm going to attack this, this will be great. And then, you know, we have other teachers that are a little more reluctant to implement that specifically in a classroom and so they're taking a more broad approach or ways that are still really helping us build community, which I think is still a really valuable part of the Common Ground Summit, so, or we believe is an important part.
Where you at? And it may not be time at the moment, but I would think the board would like to hear a little bit more because it says, on April 22nd, there's going to be a community dinner following the school showcase. So it's going to be a showcase day. I don't know if that's fully formed up yet, but.
Right. It's, we're still working.
We've got the date.
We have the date. We have plans in place.
It'd be great to hear, maybe later in March when I'm a month out.
Yes.
This is what's going on. This is what the board really knows.
Yep, and we have been meeting with Amanda Hand, who's running the Seeds of Change for the elementary sawtooth part of it. They're still doing, in terms of their approach to this, still planning on focusing on one main day as their event, but we invited them and want them to contribute to the community dinner and make it, we want to call it, I don't know, we haven't come up with a name, the Seeds of Common Ground or something, so that that community dinner is not, this is a sawtooth thing or this is a middle school, high school thing. It's broad.
Right.
And to engage the families that have kids in both schools.
About planting seeds of common ground.
Yeah.
There you go.
It's got that one down. The ground and the seeds. Yes, so that.
Is, is this, when you say community dinner, you mean the community of the school or the community?
The community, yes. We do want to make sure as we advance through that, we're going to find ways to publicize via radio, print and all those to invite, have this just be an opportunity to get community members into the building and show off some of the things we do.
Yeah, awesome. Thank you.
And when we were in Grand Portage, those parents and the LAIC members did express interest in also, you know, being involved in any type of day. So I hope that we've also got them as part of it, included presenting something else because they did express a lot of appreciation and interest in this type of, you know.
Yeah, they want to be part of it.
They want to be part of it, so.
If that may involve just in a bigger picture, I don't know, but it may involve arranging transportation.
Yep, I just thought of that too, if we could have.
In a bus or something.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Great, any other questions? Anybody? Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, eight point two is goals report. That's you.
So obviously they continue and it doesn't seem to be the adversity day it sounds like. So a little bit more, so we have that update now. And then they presented tonight, so that's it. That's where we're at in that world. And the Seeds of Change is also a development we're going to need to get a report to the board as far as where their day's going to be, excuse me, when. As far as our academic achievement piece, implementation team, which Mr. Dor is working with our middle school folks. They're working on the goals. Actually, they, he just sent out their most updated ones. So that team is working on their goals specifically in the area of math for our middle school and that includes objectives to meet that goal. And then as far as our managing our resources and fiscal responsibility, this evening is our truth in taxation. Where at in that world?
Okay. Any questions?
There's no change to.
Okay.
Yes, so bond update and.
So you didn't get that, you typically see that.
Right.
It did not change.
Okay.
But just so, and I shared with the board that we're going to be meeting on it and actually we met today. And looking at the few items that we're looking at for the remainder of the funds, we are going to be getting some information on tuck pointing for the building. As far as some information there, there's some issues with a few of our air handlers that we have. And so, so those would be some big projects that may be a combination of bond money and long-term facilities maintenance funds. Inside, we have requests for some band chairs that are specifically designed, you know, for posture for our band students. We have a few computer replacements. When I say that, we're talking just maybe three or four of our computers that are, we weren't able to replace yet. And then we also have a few rooms remaining to be tiled that will be coming out this month. And so those are the items that we're looking at for the final summation of that amount. So we're just waiting to get some estimates on those, on those different jobs. So we have to determine if, for example, the air handler, that can come out of health and safety. But if we still have funds, we can use our bond money so that it doesn't go into the health and safety. So those are the areas that we're looking at to use the remaining funds.
Is this a new air handler issue or is this sort of tied to?
Uh, no, no, this is, the two, one is from 1970 and that's over the elementary gym. And so there's some issues there that we have to find out, do we need a new one? Do we just need some new parts, whatever it happens to be? And then the other one is this, this building, right? This section of the ACA.
All the other units in the building, for the most part, are put in in 97. So we're getting to.
Oh, 97, sorry.
Nine, yeah, except for the.
Oh, that, that was.
Yeah, yeah. The San Antonio is the oldest. But the other ones are, for the most part, put in in 97. So they're all at that 20, 22 years where we just get people in here to take care of them before we do have an issue and that starts.
Sure.
Gotcha. Cool. Yeah, I was just confirming that it wasn't something with the new, because there was an issue with, you know, it was attenuation and all that.
Actually, we do have, we have a group coming up tomorrow, is that tomorrow that they're looking at? Or is it next week?
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday. We had a fire drill just the other day. And we talked to culinary, we, Tom talked to him.
We had an alarm.
We had an alarm.
Alarm.
Alarm. Not a show alarm. But they said there was no smoke, so we have to find out.
Oh.
Why do you want to go?
Was something, something get too hot?
We've had four, four fire alarms on the culinary arts since school year.
Really?
So we need to.
That's not right.
Yes, it's from the three teams.
Right.
People are learning.
They're learning.
I'm sure we have.
Okay, so, alright, well, good to update that. Okay.
I do have a question for Dr. Randall. It doesn't quite fit in here, but kind of. One was how is the culinary arts curriculum? How's it going with all of the new facilities? And then, I'd like a report from our industrial tech teacher as to, are we utilizing the 3D computer printers that we have? And, I mean, what's up? What are we doing?
Just a general update.
Okay, yeah, we can.
Culinary arts would be, yeah.
We'll get them both for January.
From both those areas would be great. Could I do that?
Do you have something you'd like them to make?
Well, the science, we gave them a dollar or two. Are they doing anything? Doing anything exciting?
Just sciency stuff.
Yeah.
Or something new because, because.
Because they have the ability to do it.
Yeah, I'll get, I'll get reports on all three of those areas and we'll have that report out on the bond update in January.
Great. Anything else as far as bond?
Good questions.
Okay, eight point four, to approve the expenditure revenue report for November 2019.
That is in your packet.
I always need to ask, Lori, where should we be? What percentage are we at?
So, we haven't hit the semester yet, have we?
No, the 20th of January.
So we're five months in.
Fifty percent is the big one on wages because, but I still need to do an update to the budget because of wages. I mean, we'd set that budget in June and things have changed. We've hired different teachers, we've done some different things. So, over the holidays, I was looking at working on a budget update, but that might not really make sense to present to the board until February, probably, so.
So we're pretty much on.
We're doing, we're doing, I feel like we're doing well. And the biggest thing that is the biggest driver is the general fund salaries and benefits, you know, in that. You know, yeah, so.
Okay, thanks Lori. Any motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the expenditure revenue report.
Hey, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Alright, and it's not six o'clock yet, so we are going to not do the treaty on taxation until we hit six. So we will go to.
Eight point seven?
Eight point seven.
Eight point seven, right? Okay. Eight point seven, to approve the Indian policies and procedures with no changes.
Okay, so that was the one that Board Member White, myself and John Moran and Maria put together that the board received that letter of, hey, we're in compliance, everything's going great. We have not met any correspondence with Maria, letting her know that we want to meet and we want to hear from them. I know the LIAC at this point in time, just looking at the current IPP, they're, they have some concerns and they're not currently supporting this one, but we know we need to make changes. And we knew that going, going into the fact that we need to have one approved. We need to have one approved in order to do our application, which is in January for the impact date. So we're going to, that, that's what we're asking for. So we're proving this at the same time, both Deb White and I will be at the next LIAC to hear from them and we're going to be setting a date.
Well, if we approve what we have, we know.
We'll have a new one.
That it's not going to be, I mean, it has to be modified because it's, I mean, not, yes. I was unaware that their expectation at the last LIAC meeting was to have a discussion about the IPP.
Yeah, as, as was mine.
So.
And this is the sort of thing that we can update, like?
Yeah, at, at any time, we can get together, you know, either party can get together and say, hey, we'd like to review our IPP. And then we can get, we get together and we update and make changes. It's, it's a fluid document, but it is also, it's really, when you get down to it, it's our, our plan and it's, so it's.
And it's really important.
Yeah.
It's really important.
Can I just get some acronym help here? LEA?
LIAC, or LEA is Local Education.
Association.
No.
No, area, no.
Authority.
Authority. So it's a school district.
Because I, I was just wondering.
LEA is your school district.
Didn't say that.
Yeah, it's not defined in the policy.
And the other one is IPP. I know what an IEP is, but what's an IEP?
It should be on the very top.
Indian Policies.
Of Procedures.
Procedures.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so part of, that's why we, you know, part of that was, we just had a listening session. That's part of the IPP. We have our conferences up there, that's part of the IPP. We invite someone from Grand Portage to be part of our interview process, that's part of the IPP. Some of those, those are some of the others.
Knowing full well that the, that there are already issues with the policy that, that we had last year, that was okay. Is there value in, do we need to approve?
We do need to have.
We need to do it for funding.
We need to do it to.
Yeah, the district has to have one approved in order to move forward with the application process.
Within the last year.
Within the last year.
Within the last year.
So we can't wait for the LIAC meeting?
Well, what we'll do is have, we'll set a time to the plan. And that was how I opened up the conversation about.
Well, so this application for funding, is that where we have to submit this, this policy? Is that, that application isn't contingent on your policy maintaining the same as when you apply for like any period of time? You know, we're going to submit this policy, policy as a part of the application, but then we're going to go change the policy. Does there, the, the application for this funding doesn't say that that's a no-no? You know what I mean? Because I'm assuming they're going to look at the policy and it's going to be contingent.
But this policy is, it's, it's an effort to help the schools and the, with our native population, with their, with their direction, have a, as equitable and balanced education for native students as for our district students.
And, and with the same sort of, not just the students, but as far as communications and involvement from Grand Portage.
And as it's gone through the decades, this, we are like, we started up down here someplace and at this point, we're like up here with quite a ways to go. But I know that in the past, that we were never in compliance and nobody ever did anything about it.
But we have been.
But we have.
The last two years, we have been.
Right.
I'm talking decades.
Yes, I agree with you completely. We've, we've done, and so part of it is updating this and, you know, like Dr. Randall said, he's reached out to them. And so that's the next step.
Sure. I just wanted to make sure that.
I know, it seems strange that we know it's going to change.
If that was going to be an issue, then maybe time is of the essence to like move that meeting up or something if that was going to cause us some sort of issue, but, okay, alright.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Well, it's actually really exciting because it's, it's improving the education for all of our kids and it's building community and, and bringing the communities together. And it's a way of, of better understanding, so.
Sure.
Yes.
I can make a motion to approve the policy and procedures.
Thank you. Okay. Any other discussion? Any other discussion for anybody? We look forward to the update and the work that you will do with the LIAC and then we look forward to seeing an update to this. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Okay, eight point eight, to set the meeting date for our organizational meeting in January. And so the dates we need to look at are the second or the ninth. The 16th we would not do because of the MSBA conference. So, please, everyone.
Gets us to the second of the day.
Second or ninth.
Second or the ninth of January. And that meeting is typically, that's our, that is our organizational meeting. That's where we pick up our chair, you know, all of our officers. We assign everyone to committees. And so it's usually a relatively quick meeting. I don't.
We do our meeting calendar for the year.
And we do, yes, we do our meeting calendar. At this time, we would just hopefully have one meeting in January. So, thoughts from you, what works, or I guess is there one that?
I can, I can come to either one.
Okay.
Either one.
Okay. So what's everyone's preference? Dan? So what's everyone's preference? Dan, or you?
I I'm actually good either way, I was just trying to look this thing up, I thought I got an email from MSBA that cited the statute that said it needed to be like.
It's going the first month.
The first Monday.
The first Monday of the month, or as quickly as possible.
It's just, uh, it's just their, it's just their way of getting it done as quick as possible.
Yes, and that is their suggestion to get it done. So we are okay if we do it on.
On Thursday, we did it last year on Thursday.
Sure, yeah, no, I just.
So is that, so I'm looking, is everyone?
Is anyone else going to that MSBA conference?
I am.
I'm planning on it too, great.
Great.
I'm gonna do one of the.
Best dinners we've had.
All-day sessions on engaging the compute, the community.
Good, well, I, we expect a report to be coming up. Um, okay, so let's pick January second then, is that everyone's, and you're good?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, we will set our organizational meeting for January second, twenty twenty.
Five o'clock?
At five P M.
No exotic New Year's vacations, I guess.
I guess. I gotta stay in the county.
You got two little kids.
Uh, they take them.
No more applications.
Okay, eight point nine, um, is to approve Board Member White as the school board on the Athletic Hall of Fame. I would like to mention that normally we wouldn't, um, I guess we can do this now, but normally, Mr. Dorr, we would set these in January. Is there a need to set this now, or can we wait until January? I mean, is this group?
I actually, it it, there's not a rush, I guess I just wanted to make sure that the board was informed of the intention.
Well, I.
Did you, did you know, did you know this?
I just have some questions about the, about the origin of this, I I take it you got this, I mean, what's the history on this?
Sure.
I mean, I'm not opposed to it.
Of the start of it?
It's brand new.
Yeah, it's brand new.
Um, I'd say that there's been a push for about a decade to start one, and. Um, lots of of the older, um, sports fans in this community have, who've known me for, as a kid, as a former athlete, have always. When's that gonna happen, when's that gonna happen? I never really felt like it was my place, um, to begin that project, because I was a teacher and a coach, and I, I was not in admin at the time, so. Um, we had suggested it a few times, and it just never took form, and then, um. I had an older gentleman in the community who has been very supportive of the school over the years, and he said, you know. I won't say exactly how he said it, but you know, people are getting up there in age, and it would be nice to recognize them before they're gone in the community. And so it's been about a decade in the process, and I finally just said, this is something that a lot of people are asking for, and. Um, I started talking with Two Harbors, uh, A.D. Scott Ross, and then with ESCO's, um, Chad Stolscuff, and then with Moose Lakes A.D. Tony, who's leaving, and I kind of looked at all of their models. And, um, I kind of morphed the three together to fit the personality of our community. And then I started asking former coaches, um, community members their thoughts, and, um, asked for their participation. And they all agree, and they're all real excited, and some people I think are willing to sponsor those events, and. Um, one thing I'd like the committee to consider, once, um, they're all approved, is the the brainstorming of. When would this school like to do this with the community, so when we celebrate this thing, whether it's annually or every two or three years. Is this a fisherman's picnic thing that we do, is this a homecoming thing that we do? So that's kind of how it was born, um, to be honest, a lot of people are, were kind of getting impatient behind the scenes, and I just, now I'm in the role where. I'm the activities director, and I thought, you know, this is the time to start this, lots of people have wanted this, so. So, yeah, we we've put in a decent amount of hours, and, uh, the one thing I did not give you yet is the nomination, uh, form that we'll have. So anybody in the community that wanted to nominate somebody, or somebody who knows somebody, um, you know, we've had a pro coach who coached here in the nineteen fifties, and then went on to coach for the Vikings, we've had. Olympian skiers, we've had numerous people have gone on to done, to do great things outside of even just their personal accolades here at the school, so. That's how it started, and, um. Yeah, there's actually a good, really good energy behind it, that goes far beyond myself or just a couple people, so, kind of excited about that.
So, um, question, um, so I I noticed that you said we would, subsequent years, maybe add three people a year, five people a year. The first year, do you have, how many people would you, or would, you know?
To be honest, like, the the benchmark that I've been given is never to go past ten, even in the first year, because of how we would. Create a banquet that would allow time to do something like that, just the logistics. Um, but I'm not set on that yet, cause I really want the committee to make the decision and not me. And get smart people in the room to kind of come together and, uh, you know. If Deb's approved, she'd be the school board person on that, I have a community member and and the coaches, and I'd like them to kind of decide that, but I I would see about ten people, I can think of. I've been doing some research behind the scenes that my wife will attest to when I. Spend my nights up doing some of this, but I can think of ten people right now that should be locked for the first year, that should really be recognized, and we would target the. The legacy candidates of the people who are maybe in their their seventies and their eighties, and, um, some of those people in our community that should be recognized. I can have a lot more specifics, yes.
Yeah, I think the board would also probably appreciate, um. You know, so how long is, for example, you know, the activities director, sounds like that's a position on there, having the board members position on there, but the other folks. Uh, the coaches, member of large, are they on the committee for a year, are they on the committee for five years?
Right. And then they'll be six years.
If if you could get just kind of what that is.
Absolutely.
That would appreciate it.
And I know this isn't the exacts, cause we do have a policy regarding naming of facilities, and so I would just make sure, and I know this isn't exactly the same thing, but I would just make sure that. We've got similar language, I guess, between the two, I mean, we do have a description of what it means, and, I mean, you do have a description, I just don't want to have two documents out here that are not. That don't follow the same vein of thinking, I guess.
Agreed.
And so I think you need to, you need to refer to that board-approved one, and then, I don't know, does this. Is this something, and I mean, we have it on here that we're, um, approving a board member, but I mean, do we need to approve this whole? Thing, or not, maybe we don't, um.
Well, that was sort of, I sort of thought we really need to talk as a board about this.
Yes.
I mean, there's value, there's value in so many things.
Yeah.
And I, of course, like athletics, but, um. Um, but. Let's talk about it. What's the problem with it?
I don't have a problem with it.
No, 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 I'm not.
Right, exactly, no, I think, you know, anytime you do this, I just, you know, I think you need to, you know, you have to look at the people that are on the committee. So you have to look at the the proposed candidates, and so anytime, anytime you start something that, I guess, you know, you've, uh, Mitch did a lot of work on this, obviously, and he. Has come up with, it's, you know, a pretty thorough plan, it looks, but I also, you know, have to make sure that you get a good cross-section of our community. To be able to do those, and I'm not criticizing, uh, people on there, but I, I'm gonna question the cross-section of your group of proposed candidates right now. Um, but, so that was my only thought, um, as far as that goes. So, go ahead, Nina, you have something?
Um, is the funding for this all from?
All donation.
All donation, okay.
Or, yeah, all donation.
And, um, you know, I always want to know about sustainability, so, um, right now, obviously, you know, it's tied to you, so. If you're doing a different job, or you're not the athletic, is this, I didn't read it thoroughly enough to know, is it tied to the athletic director, or the activities director?
It is. Yep, I I I want it to be something that goes beyond me. Um, anything that, I mean, I feel like there's some goals I want to do in that role, and that's one of them before I were to move on, and I want that to be able to live past any tenure I would have. As far as the candidates on there, I wanted the expertise of athletics in Cook County, you know?
And maybe just, we just need to make, because in the third paragraph, it has Cook County Schools Hall of Fame. But the title is Cook County Athletic Hall of Fame.
Right.
So if it's Cook County's, that's not us, but it's Cook County Schools, and I think that's the intent, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. That was just, there was just something, all of a sudden, I go, oh, wait, we have to make sure that it's a school in there.
Right.
I also wonder if there's room, and I'm absolutely pro athletics and supporting people who have made a difference in athletic, but I wonder if I actually like. The Cook County Schools Hall of Fame better than Athletic Hall of Fame in the sense of in the long term, and I don't, I guess I don't know what everybody at Cook County has moved on to do. But I don't know if the next. President or Senator, or you know, someone moves on and does something really big, it could be. Not just sports-related, that could be really worth recognizing. I'm not saying that's who we would be looking at immediately anyways, but leaving it open to be a bigger, broader thing, like, we recognize what people move on and do, and we have. Yeah, Olympic skiers, and we have, we have someone who went on to be a Vikings coach, that's, that's wonderful, that should be recognized. Maybe there's other things worth recognizing too.
So maybe if we, don't we have a rocket scientist or somebody? I mean, I'm not kidding, somebody.
No, no, I'm with you.
From, you know, but.
I think the intent was to start with this, because that's what the focus of the people was. And then if we ever wanted to start a, a general hall of fame, we can do that in a different spot in the school. Cause I think that's a good idea, but we kind of wanted to see how this would go. You know, and so I guess that was the the premise right there, cause that that's a fairly large and way more involved thing, because all of a sudden, you have exponentially included. A lot more history and a lot more work, um, not that it's bad at all, just, just, it's it's in, it's a, it's a much larger task than you might imagine. First graduates were in nineteen ten, you got a lot of history in there. So I think that's why we're kind of starting small, to be honest, and then if this were to ever get passed on to somebody else, then that larger thing could be tackled, I think. That was the thinking, at least.
There can also be activities director, which includes, um, all activities.
Right.
So, not.
But there's a difference between athletics and activities. And when you, when, if you're gonna talk sports, um, I suppose chess is a sport, not to, we don't have a chess club, no, but, I mean, there, there's a difference between athletics. And the play, and they all have equal value, but athletics is like. Athletics, I don't, you know, the the athletics in this community, in Cook County, has brought this community together. Year after year after year, you know, from the, from the, um. Elementary kids in the feeder programs, to the middle school kids, to the high school kids, and it, it really has built in. Community, even when we don't get along about anything else, people are there for our kids, I mean, it's the unifying, it's a unifier. I don't think sports has ever pulled us apart, has it? Maybe, I'm sure it has, in something, I don't know.
Vikings, Packers, but.
Well, no, no, but I mean, you know, um.
No. I think the thing, the thing about it, this will not create something that is unique to us. Numerous schools have athletic hall of fames, and to be honest, we're probably way late to the game. Just to give you some perspective of what other schools do.
But I agree, that they're really on another, another entity, recognition. For the other activities, for the other, not, maybe not just the activities, but, but the other kids that are not. Athletic, but they, they have, you know, they have prospered, they have grown, I mean, they've contributed greatly, and who are they? I don't know.
I mean, I don't, I just find myself curious, what, then what's the, what's the purpose behind it to some degree, if. You know, how have these people made an impact then on our community as they've moved on and done great things? And how does it benefit, how has it benefited the school?
Mitch, is it act, actually that they have moved on, I mean, it's, they get recognized for what they have done after they left, or for what?
There's some criteria in there, but no, it 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 might be that we've just had an all-state athlete that that played here, it's it's an athletic measure. It's a, you know, for the most part, this is an athletic measure, this is a kid who went above and beyond, and was a three-time state champion, or Lyle Anderson, who's a Hall of Fame coach, or. Um, we have a state long jump champion, we have, um, two guys who've done the radio for us, say, for twenty-five years, or. Um, we've had a fan who's come to every game for forty years, this is simply a recognition of either service or actually their ability. And it is a a longstanding tradition in in athletics, for if you go to a school, people go before the game, and they look at the team's trophy case, and they look at the records, and it's, it's more of a historical account of. Hey, these were some really great things that happened, it's not a, it's not necessarily that they contributed to the school, that they might have.
Well.
But, you know, they contributed during their time period.
Well, that's what I, are these graduates, or are these?
Right.
You know, the people who broadcast every football game, or, you know, what what are we looking at, I guess, this morning? I need some more information.
So.
It is in here.
So, again, when you said like ten to start with, is that across all categories? So, ten, maybe two athletes, two teams, two whatever?
Just depends on, to be honest, to be honest, my sense of urgency with this is because. We have enough people in the community right now that are in their seventies or eighties, I'm not worried about the number in each category as much as recognizing. Those members from our community that should be recognized before. We can't.
Okay, I just wondered.
Yeah.
I guess my only comment about it is, you know, as we implement this and manage it, and those of us that are in charge of managing it, you know, I think it's just important to like, keep eyes wide open in terms of like. You know, sports, and this is coming from somebody who is a for-sport varsity letterman, so I get it. But, you know, sports have, they take up their fair share of the oxygen, if not a little more, in terms of, you know. Perhaps a level of privilege, a certain amount of like cloud, or just like attitude, and whatever that athletes and athletic programs enjoy within schools. This is just an additional thing on that, and I think that we just should be like cognizant of that issue, and not let that perhaps overinflate anybody's. Sense of standing in the school, because at the end of the day, it is just a game, and it is, it's great, it's fun, but it's also like, you know. We also need to understand like the impact on everybody, and we don't want it to like, you know, you don't, there's always like, you just don't want to see something bad come of something good. You know, and I think it's just important to like, keep that perspective, because, you know, it's. That's just, that's just important, so.
We have a jock attitude in this school?
You're not talking about. I think it depends on who you ask. I think it depends on who you ask, I, you know, I mean, if you talk to the kid that's never done anything, ever, maybe, yeah, they maybe say, yeah.
But how, no. No, but but how they're treated by the athletes. I mean, I just remembered on this dating.
I think it's too, I guess, even the question bothers me.
Well, do do they, do the athletes truly, do you get a sense, do other students get a sense that they feel that they're better? Than those that aren't out there on the football field or on the volleyball court?
I I wouldn't want to answer that, I mean, ask, ask, ask kids what they think of my son. And you get a pretty good answer, and you ask kids what they think of another kid, you're gonna get a different answer, I mean, if you're gonna say, overall, we're really labeling a group, that's pretty. Dangerous in my mind, I think you're always gonna have some kids who are like, I'm this, and you're always gonna have kids that are pretty humble and walk the hallway, so. Um, I am a activities director who resents the glorification of athletics.
But that's what kind of this is.
It is not, it is not, it is recognizing people who've done great things, and I think there's a big time difference. We're not recognizing our high school kids for doing great things, we're, this is a historical account of what people have accomplished through really hard work, and my kid can look up there and go, wow. And my kid can look up there and go, wow, that guy in nineteen fifty did that. That's an amazing thing. It's not. I, I don't believe in the glorification of athletics because like you said, I won't let my kids put up sports posters in their rooms. Those guys aren't gods. I will not allow that to happen in my house. Are there kids that do that once in a while? Yeah. Do we try to teach humility and how to treat people well in school? Yep, we sure do. Does that always work? No? So is it the seventies and eighties at this school? Absolutely not, because I lived it. It's not even close. So I think we've come a long way, but I mean, I'm the activities director, everybody would say I'm biased too. So we got a lot of great kids and we, we teach them all the best we can.
And you know, I think, I think you're right. There's a lot of progress. But I think there's always an opportunity for the kids who are the biggest and strongest and the fastest to see themselves as better than kids that aren't. And so I think that's a constant thing that as adults we have to be vigilant about. And try to, to really emphasize that everyone has value and has a place. And just because you're bigger or stronger doesn't make you better. And I, I think that's a constant conversation because the human condition always wants to do that. It always wants to try to compare two, two people. And so I just think it's good that we're making progress, but I think it's something we always have to be aware of.
And Rena, there, this school, just from one of my kids received, there was a lot of mentorship, the elders and the, and the stress as I, I mean, it was stressed that you are role models. You are role models for this, for the school, for the community. And you have this responsibility to have really civil, respectful conduct. And I think that for most of our students, athletes, they, it's, we've always had a reputation of being really good, a good, our athletes, good academic athletes, I mean, the whole thing. And we've always even as a community conducted ourselves very nicely in athletic, you know, away games, you know, which is not always the same. But I would like to think that that continues, that our older athletes recognize their opportunity to be the role models for the younger kids and, you know.
Yeah, I don't know. I guess I don't know, you know, speaking just transparently, what I'm thinking is, you know, on every given Saturday, I've got twenty varsity kids working with kindergarteners. So I don't know where this conversation's going exactly.
Okay, that answers the question.
Right. I'm just saying if we're here to demean athletes, then I'm, I'm kind of like, I, I don't know exactly what we're getting at. But like the Hall of Fame isn't have anything to do with our kids now. Like.
You have to be on the school for ten years to be eligible.
You know, I just.
And Mitch, I, I just want to say that I wasn't trying to demean you, but, but you, you know what I mean. I mean, this, it's always a conversation for the kids that have the most, that they need to be aware of those around them that don't. That's a constant conversation that we need to be having as adults with each other as well as with kids. And, and I, and that's, that's the diversity piece. And that, I didn't mean to say that we weren't doing that. I think we have made a lot of improvement around here, but I, I think it's a constant, you can't ever assume that it's a, it's a done deal.
Does the board have any questions about the Hall of Fame?
The Athletic Hall of Fame specifically.
Right. So, yeah, so I guess we need to, the question we need to decide is, do we want to appoint a member now? Or do we want to wait and be that part of our organizational leader?
Well, I would like to know if the board approves us having a Cook County Schools Athletic Hall of Fame. That's more important than to me.
Right.
Right. And I find I also question other things like, I think ten years out of school is too young to be in the, a Hall of Fame in our school, in my opinion. I just think people prove who they are every day throughout their life, not just in athletics, but in all areas. And when we have possible Hall of Fame members who make questionable choices in other areas, areas of their lives that are now people that we recognize as really positive. I don't, I don't know. I feel like ten years is pretty.
If it's detailed, that could be discussed, couldn't it?
And there's an option of removal.
So if somebody made a poor choice, they get on, they can make a portrait?
There is an option, there is a.
It'll be removed. It's.
We want to have to deal with that though.
Well, unfortunately.
Well, you can't, you can't say. I mean, you could have a legacy person all of a sudden show up and they're this or that. Well, then they would be taken out. They've been out of school for fifteen years.
Well, I, I wouldn't even say that. Well.
Say it. Yeah, I mean, anything can happen.
And, yeah.
Coach prepare.
So we do need to give it the, yeah, yeah, exactly. So we do need to give a direction. And I don't think, and I, I don't think we're giving this a thumbs down. I mean, as I look across, I am like trying to gauge everybody's, I think we're giving it a thumbs up with, with perspective and just making sure that we're doing this in the right way. So we're not saying we're not doing this. You know, that's not the message we're giving Mitch. Okay? All right. It is a go, but.
Yeah, I agree with that. Intentionality behind it.
Right. Right. Okay.
So is the board going to then approve someone in January?
We can do me another, it doesn't make any difference.
Well, what we can do is we can appoint you now and then we can, it's on our list. It'll be on our list for January and we can do it if.
Yeah. For the listings public, it doesn't mean I get an increase in pay.
What?
It certainly does.
I mean, at least not through the public money. This is all privately funded.
This is all privately funded.
Big corporate money.
That's what we have on the radio.
Yeah, exactly.
I would hope so.
Aha. All right. So we, so would we like to do a motion to officially appoint DePoy on that if we'd like to, somebody can do that?
Sure, I'll make a motion to appoint DePoy to be the school board member of the forthcoming Cook County Schools Athletic Hall of Fame Selection Committee.
Please jump down.
I'll second that.
All right. Any other discussion?
We've probably got enough, don't you think?
It's been a great, I enjoy these discussions. They're very interesting. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. But you know, like we're all agreeing, but we're really. Motion carries. All right. And we are at five fifty-nine, so we're gonna, we're set up for our truth and taxation meeting. So we're just gonna do a pause here and we're gonna allow Lori to get ready here. And I will move. So people can see. I can move.
Most likely.
There we go.
Thank you. Down in the front.
So this is the school district truth and taxation meeting. It is a required discussion that we have to have every year to discuss our levy and our budget. Those are the only two requirements. So we're going to discuss our levy first and then our budget. Page down. This is only for the proposed school district portion of the levy. Each property tax statement has four entities and we're going to discuss the school one. I don't think anyone's shown up at the meeting to discuss the other ones, so if they wanted to, they could leave or they could stay. So we're adopting the levy now and the property owners pay taxes during the next year. But that funding is mostly received and used for in the following year, in fiscal year twenty twenty-one for district expenditures. This is what our levy looks like this year as compared to last year. It is going up point six two percent. We tried really hard to, yeah, the overall, the total. We've tried really hard to level that out and not make lots of changes each year. Okay, though. There you go. As you can see, some of those changes over some of the years were driven by votes, different voter, voter approved levy and prior bond money that we've been using and our operating dollars per pupil that has allowed us to still offer the same level of education, sports, athletics, everything that we've already been doing. This chart, when I put it in Google, actually looks like I got catched up. But basically it shows the amount of levy versus voter versus other. So it shows how much of our forty-one percent, the voters have went and said, yes, we're going to support the school. That's how much of the levy was approved by voters and the rest of the levy was approved by state statute. Basically on our number of students we have and other formulas where we get our funding. So I went through each section of the levy and talked about who pays. And you can see the net effect on the, on the bottom corner. The referendum market value, homestead, commercial, agricultural and apartment buildings pay against this tax. It go, it went up a little bit. It's mainly driven by our pupil counts. They go back and make adjustments other years. If our student's level was down, they might adjust negatively. If our student population was up versus what the year when it ended, they may adjust positively. This one looks like they're going up and it's used for general operating expenses in fiscal year twenty-one. Okay?
So the referendum market value, that's for everybody who lives here.
Yep.
Lives and works.
And commercial, you know, commercial properties.
Yeah.
Same thing, referendum market value, other, it's another levy category. Again, based on the number of students enrolled. We had a lot of adjustments that went up thirty-one thousand, but we had some other stuff going down. So the net increase over the prior year was fifteen thousand, just over fifteen thousand dollars. Net tax capacity, who pays? All taxpayers, including seasonal recreational. So that's spread across all the property in the county. Student achievement, multiple level categories, adjustments up and down. I picked out the biggest ones to highlight there, reappointment, career and tech and prior year adjustments. So our career and tech teachers, we get payments from our levy. Long-term facilities in prior year, we had a ninety, ninety-eight hundred dollar decrease. There's a lot, there's a thirty-six page document that's driving all of this. I don't try to present all of that. We'd be here all night. But those are just the big adjustments and taconite adjustments, forty-two, nine hundred fifty-three decrease.
The taconite is based off of a three-year production average.
You're right. Okay. Community service, that is zero. And the reason it is zero is because taconite offsets that for our taxpayers. So it was increasing approximately nineteen thousand, but it's all due to the ECFE. But then taconite comes back and pays that for us. So that's why it actually shows up as zero percent on my chart.
With the taconite funding, there's in legislation, taconite funding, so we get this, this fund. And the first area it goes to is community and then there's a list of how it gets set. And where it is the dust.
Right.
Yeah.
And debt service. So that section of the levy, all properties, including seasonal recreational. So the six and a half million dollars that we had to do projects on the school got spread across seasonal recreational owners too, which I feel that that was what helped improve, get our voters to approve it. It wasn't just being hit on the homesteaded properties. It went up seventy-four thousand, four hundred forty-two, bas- and they based that on the payments that I, we, the school has to pay this year. We had done something in the past, twenty seventeen, that saved the taxpayers ninety-five thousand over seven years by refunding. And it's almost like doing refinancing your house in that similar fashion. So. And then this is a key chart. Everyone thinks of the levy, hey, we're paying, we're paying your taxes, you're paying, we're paying for your school. Only a portion of our revenue, twenty-two percent, comes from the levy. The school district gets money from several other sources, federal donations. I mean, all of our other revenues make up seventy-eight percent of our, our revenue for the school district to operate. So it's kind of good to remember that some of the taxes that our school district is supported by a lot of other areas. I kind of stole this chart from Brady, hit the county. Just because our levy's going up at point six two percent doesn't mean your taxes are going to go up by that much. We looked at the different property that that's got spread across throughout the county. And it's a, it's a higher chunk of property. So then it's getting spread across more dollars in property. So basically in this example, it could go down, even though your property stayed the same value and your taxable value stayed the same. Your tax might could go down. So that's kind of a key point that helped, helped a lot of people to realize. So then the nineteen twenty budget overview, this budget was set in June. Some things have been happening since then, but we're in really good shape. The six and a half million dollars that we got in the bond money has been able to help us do things for our school without spending our long-term facilities maintenance dollars. And because of that, we've been able to save and pocket those mon- those monies and save for future projects that have to be spent. So some of these dollars have to be spent on specific projects. The general fund and then the transportation fund, we have a lot more leeway with for paying for operating of the school. Local funds one, three and five make up what the state calls the general fund. Fund twenty-five represents post-employment benefits trust fund, which has been reducing. And that, I foresee that being completely gone in a couple of years. And we probably won't be replacing that. And I project a surplus at the end of the year again. Okay? The June thirtieth fund balance was three million, forty-seven thousand, two hundred seventy-eight. It's better than I expected due to a couple of different things happened during the year. We, we received increased revenue, different title and federal sources of a hundred fifty-nine thousand. Can't budget for it. We never know if we're going to get it or not. We received additional donations and student fees and miscellaneous revenues, which also get counted into that general fund balance. State sources was an additional sixty thousand dollars and then increased property taxes and PILP funds. That's another one we can't budget for with the PILP funds, a hundred ninety-four thousand. Expenditures were under the initial adopted budget by nine thousand, which I've never been that close before in, in my five years here. It's pretty, pretty accurate. Hopefully I'm getting better at budgeting and being able to recognize, I don't know. I don't know if I deserve credit for that one or I just got lucky. Some funds in the fund balance are assigned for future expenditures, expenditures for technology, bus purchase and curriculum for a total amount of four hundred forty-five thousand dollars. I would recommend the board do that again and look at some of those even further out for the future. And there you have. Anybody got any questions? Part of the truth and taxation is we have to allow the public to speak. So if you've got any questions, now's your time. If not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, well done.
Okay. So then we have to approve the final levy certification for twenty nineteen in the amount of one point eight six six, nine hundred fifty thousand, ninety-two cents. It's a very precise number. It's in our sheet here.
I will make a motion to approve the final levy certification for twenty nineteen.
I will second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Okay. So then we. Okay, so then we are going to jump back to our agenda. Eight point one zero. To, um, we have a motion on here, but for just, just in case we end up changing our motion or whatever, let's just have a discussion. We don't have to have a motion on the table for discussion.
Amanda B. O. is here to present.
Okay. Um, yearly travel program. And we do have some information here that we received. Go ahead.
Yeah, Ms. B. O. provided you all with the, with the document. And I also, I think I sent that out to the board and then, uh, that was also.
Yeah, I just sent out this one, um, set out in front of you today when I arrived. Sorry, I didn't get that one to you ahead of time. Um, so thank you for letting me come talk about two things tonight that I'm very passionate about. One, the diversity committee, and two, um, travel, um, with our school. So I'm here tonight for the travel program. I'd like to propose a yearly travel program to the board, um, for Cook County schools. So just kind of to run through that real quickly. Really, my goal here is that I'd like to help our students develop into twenty-first century learners in our school. Promote them to be global citizens and forward-thinking leaders. And so that's why I'd like to start this yearly travel program at our school. Um, and I would really love the support of Dr. Crandall and the school board in this endeavor. So the things I'll talk about quickly tonight. First of all, just why I'm passionate about this and the benefits that travel has to individuals. The benefits that travel has to our school. The current travel plans that we already have in motion at Cook County and then future travel plans that I'd like to see realized. So first, and I'm sure many of you've had the opportunities to travel, whether it's just nationally or internationally. And I think you'll agree, um, it is such a powerful experience, right? It can be such an eye-opening experience. So just to kind of illuminate why I'm so passionate about it. I was fortunate enough to have my first international trip when I was eleven. I traveled to Germany and France and kind of all over Europe with my, my family. And it completely changed my life trajectory, honestly, that one trip. It really opened my eyes to a world that was completely different than anything I was experiencing in northern Indiana where I grew up. It sparked a lifelong curiosity for me about the world around me and other cultures and how I fit into that. And it instilled in me this, this sense of confidence and adventure that hasn't been shaken since I was eleven, which I think is pretty powerful. I ended up choosing French as one of my majors as an undergraduate and studied abroad in southern France for six months. Honestly, because of that one trip early on. Similarly, I feel like this is, this travel has such a similar impact for our students, is what I mean to say. I think that opportunities to travel outside of Minnesota especially are going to help them develop those leadership skills that are so important in order to navigate new experiences in the world around them with confidence especially. It'll help provide inspiration for our students for college entrance and scholarship essays when time comes for that. Um, and it'll help them become globally-minded in a world that's increasingly connected. There are also benefits to our school. It'll help our school support students in becoming those twenty-first century leaders, um, and learners, global citizen and forward-thinking, um, leaders. And then it'll prepare students for college and careers by helping them learn to navigate in a globally-connected world. So we already have some current travel plans that are in motion and I'm happy to talk more. I know that's the Greece trip that you have in front of you, that agenda. So last October, I launched this trip with our school, the high school students, to take, um, students to Greece for ten days on an educational tour. And then we'll fly from Greece to Defoe, Switzerland for a global leadership summit for two days. It's going to be an incredible experience. So I'm taking thirteen of our high school students on that trip. Um, and we're actually traveling with Two Harbors High School. The whole trip is done with them, um, with a teacher that has previously led, um, trips through EF tours. Their Spanish teacher is the one leading the trip, um, at their school. And then, um, we also have scheduled for twenty twenty-one, Michael Haas, our band director, is taking eighteen middle and high school students on a trip to Chicago. Yeah. So then in the future, like I mentioned, I wanted this to be a yearly travel program. I want to kind of build that excitement and those expectations and, um, the ability for students to build a plan. You know, hey, if I can't go on this trip, I can figure out a way to go on the next trip and kind of have that excitement. I'd like to be working with other teachers to host a different kind of trip each year. So ideally, that would alternate between larger trips like this, this Greece and Switzerland trip, um, this upcoming twenty twenty year, with other smaller domestic or even international trips, um, like a trip in the future to Costa Rica. Or the music trip that Mr. Haas is taking. And then, um, also trips to Washington DC with the social studies department. So I've talked with other teachers preliminarily to see if they're interested, because it wouldn't just be me that would be wanting to lead these. And, um, Mr. Haas is really excited about the idea of collaborating on this, um, and making it a rotating thing. Mr. Miller, our social studies middle school teacher, is really excited about the idea of potentially taking kids to Washington DC. And I know I've spoke with Erin Pets as well, our new Spanish teacher, and she's excited about, um, chaperoning or leading trips with me as well. So I would also, um, like to propose, like, one of the trips that I'd like to take, Two Harbors is going to Costa Rica in twenty twenty-one, June of twenty twenty-one. Um, a much smaller scale trip than what we're doing to Greece. So I'd love to be able to collaborate again with them and maybe join our schools again for that trip. And then, um, Dr. Crandall would probably know about this, I hope. I think she, Ms. Gail presented to the school board about this as well. Two Harbors, I see, uh, three eighty-one is implementing a travel program really similar to this. And so my hope is kind of to do something, like to, to strengthen our North Shore community, to be able to also implement a similar program. So my hope is that while not all trips, we wouldn't be able to coordinate on all trips, but I'm hoping that we could at least get some of these in line with their school and ideally Silver Bay as well, to really strengthen that entire North Shore community. And then I see benefits even logistically for that, you know? So there's the friendships that can be made, those opportunities that can be made, that community that can be strengthened. But I think there are just some logistical benefits, um, to collaborating with them on at least some of these trips, such as lowering the cost for students. The more people you have go, the lower the cost is per student. And then, um, also opportunities to fundraise become easier when we have more students and across the whole North Shore. So any questions you have or feedback, I'd love to hear. And I really hope you're as excited as I am about being able to offer, offer this to our students.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
I think it's a great idea personally. I've had, but I've been fortunate enough to do it for an amount of travel in my life. And yeah, I, I think it's super important to, you know, helping young people get a worldview. You know, especially when you live in rural northern Minnesota, um, it's not always easy to come by. So that's, I think, a really worthwhile endeavor. And I, having traveled with just two kids, granted, they're young, I know that's a challenge. So I, I commend your enthusiasm for traveling with thirteen. Granted, they're older, but still, it's logistics and stuff, so. But yeah, I think it sounds great. Not really a question, but.
Well, I'll be the opposite of them.
Okay.
I'm not, and I'm not necessarily, um, a huge fan of this at this age. I, you know, I think it's a great opportunity that, um, many programs offer. There's faith-based, faith-based programs all over the place. And, um, obviously, when you get to college, it's a huge encouragement to do that. And so, um, and also the economics of this. You look at the price tags of these, this is a lot. And I realize that there's fundraising that happens behind the scenes. But it's a lot of money per student, it's like five thousand, five hundred dollars per kid. And so just thinking of our community and, um, you know, there's many, there's the liability part of it and the age of the students. And I agree, I think it's fantastic to broaden people's perspectives. And I encourage everybody to travel that can travel. I just am not a fan of doing it in, at the high school level. And so I'm not necessarily really for this kind of a thing. You know, I think, I think in our community, it's a lot to ask our businesses to be, they're asked all the time, constantly. Constantly. And it's a struggle for them to pick and choose who they're going to say yes to and who they're going to say no to. And, um, so, and I also think it's hard for students when they see that price tag or parents see that price tag, even though there's fundraising behind it. If you bring the flyer to grandma or grandpa to buy the wrapping paper, they can't even do that. And so there's a little bit of economic concerns I have with that dollar amount that is put out there. And so, and I know there's, I know you can fundraise.
Can I jump in? Yeah, go ahead. So these are absolutely concerns that I have as well, and I'm still new to the community, so I'm still learning. I know right away, I talked with Mr. Dore about this and he brought up some of these exact issues last fall. First, this is a uniquely expensive trip and I don't anticipate that future trips will be anywhere near this pricey. The reason this particular price tag is so high is because we're joining a trip to Greece with that global leadership summit, summit in Switzerland. And that really made it jump. The Costa Rica trip, which I think would still be on the pricier side of what we anticipate compared to, say, those domestic trips to DC or Chicago, is about thirty-three hundred, I believe, so at least significantly less. Still very pricey, especially considering what, the width spread in our community. The other thing I want to throw out there is that it's really important to me that the way that we're raising money is through service. So one of the biggest fundraisers we've had actually has been going to North Shore Waste. And we've cleaned up their dump site three different times and we've cleaned up downtown and picked up trash. And then they've given us a donation. And that was something that they put out in the community, I saw in the swap and shop, a parent connected me. And that's how we were able to go out. So most of my students have participated in that several times. We're looking at trying to get like a gift wrapping fundraiser, will we wrap your gifts? Um, and looking at maybe getting, um, bagging groceries the way Two Harbors does and, and just for donations by the public as they come in. I've really tried to stay away from, let's just go sell something else, let's go, just go knock on the doors of other businesses. Because like you said, we're in such a small community that they're getting hit up all the time. And then the last thing I just wanted to mention too is that, so this is my first year and first trip doing this, so I'm learning a lot. But in the future, I'd really like to set up different kinds of scholarships. I'd like to work with Grand Portage to see if they could have, if we could look at a way to get a scholarship for students from Grand Portage. Um, I'm trying to find different ways that, that could really make this accessible for all students. So I didn't mean to cut you off, but I want to make sure I got all those in.
That's perfect.
Yeah.
And maybe just adding another perspective on the price. It sure is a lot cheaper to send your one child on a trip or maybe two than to take your family of seven or three or whatever. However, however big your family is. You know, even to pay for one child plus mom and dad, to do something comparable is going to be substantially more expensive than one child alone with hopefully chaperones that we feel really confident in and all these, you know? And I've traveled with EF specifically before and have had good experiences. I also am aware that, um, a lot of schools don't continue doing these types of trips because it is considered a big liability. So, um, just a thought. I also think, another random thought would be that, um, there's already a trip in planning that hasn't been approved, you know, right?
The Greece trip, you mean?
You're, I mean, you're asking us to approve a yearly travel program and, uh, and for the school board to be on board after it's already gotten rolling. Like, it just feels like if the, and I'm not saying that's what the sense is, but if the sense were, we don't want to do this and you already have a bunch of kids fundraising and working with North Shore Waste and whatnot, I don't know.
Then it wouldn't be a Cook County school-sponsored trip.
It wouldn't have our name on it.
They could jump in with, in this case, it's the, uh, Two Harbors. So they wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a Cook County.
So I, um, both of my daughters went on trips in high school. One went on a World War II trip, um, with South High School, um, which was life-altering for her, visit many World War II sites. And the other one spent a couple of weeks in southern France, actually just in a family's house, working on her French skills. And, um, I think both of them considered those things to be probably the most significant things they did in high school. And I think have, have affected their lives. And, and it was a stretch for me at the time to send them. But I think it was, I think it was worth it. I, I, I do share your economic concerns and I think it is a particularly difficult thing to do in such a small community where there is really a lot of poverty. And, um, you know, we just, I would just encourage you, you're on the right path. But there's also, there's some well-heeled people and well-heeled people in this community who are world travelers and who, um, maybe can be, you know, approached to be sponsors of some of these kids to help do that. Because there are, there are people with means here who've retired here, who have done a lot of things in their lives too that could maybe, um, become ambassadors or sponsors or, or something there that, that could, could help, help out. I think it's, I think it's worth pursuing, but I think that you're always going to have to struggle with that. How to, how to, how to make it fair. And the kid that has no hope of parents coming up with a dime, what about those kids?
Right.
And, um, that's the, that's the hard part.
Well, and like, like a trip to Washington DC, that, that really should be an entire class. I mean, this is like, there's a little importance about American history, you know? But, um, yeah, but it's the same thing, they're, yeah. Do the same kids get to go every other year?
As if they have the means to do so.
I mean, yeah, as far as I understand it, I mean, as from the financial standpoint, it's basically, I mean, the school isn't putting in anything, right?
Correct.
So it's, it's sort of, I, I, I sort of see that point as a little bit slightly irrelevant because if people are unable to pay, then it doesn't happen. And that's sort of like, it either, it either is or it isn't, you know?
So we would be liable because it would be on the umbrella of the school. So if there was something to happen, that's my understanding, it would, it would come back to us. So we do, there is some sort of, like, forgiveness.
Yeah, no, I.
Responsibility that we do, would have.
I, I hear that. I'm just saying, like, in terms of, like, the fundraising, to be able to, like, pay the, the, whatever the, the fee is to participate. I mean, people will either be able to come up with that or not. And that will, and if, if it's unsustainable, that will flesh itself out. You know, it just, it just is the way that it is. Um, I think, so I think it's like a little speculative to say one way or the other, whether it can be supported or not from that perspective. From a liability standpoint, I mean, yeah, sure, there's, there's some risk. I mean, there's also a lot of risk for kids riding on buses in the middle of winter, going to sports games like six hours away. You know, being in a car is risky, you know? There's risk with everything, you know?
Well, that's true, a plane could fall on you as opposed to falling out of the sky with the plane.
It's true. I mean, there's, there, we're, there's risk in lots of things.
Okay, so that's a low probability, like this.
So.
With a high impact.
So I just, I don't know, I, I guess. I don't know. I, I. I, I just, I guess I just wouldn't put like, I wouldn't sink the ship on, like, the, something bad could happen because something bad could happen anytime, anywhere.
We have to vote or decide or something and I think we should be all aware of.
Well, we have a fiscal responsibility.
And we have a responsibility to these students.
For sure.
Yeah, our fiscal piece will come under the label.
Yeah.
Which we would have, there was a question about how our insurance was intertwined with that. Did you hear back?
They didn't get back to me yet. The last question was where were they going and I sent them to Greece and to Switzerland.
So, so maybe, maybe, uh, we should have that piece of information before we vote on this. I'm, I'm just wondering that we should know. I mean, so that we make a completely informed decision about, or insurance handle it and, and what is the impact of that? I, I mean, I, could we move that to the January meeting or something?
Yeah.
We have a discussion.
It's just a discussion.
I totally, I don't know that I will be able to make the January meeting if that's okay, but I can certainly provide whatever information.
And so if any other questions that come up, you know, Ms. B. O., obviously, she can still use the computer.
Yeah. Yeah, definitely.
Uh, I don't have a question, but I did ask a lot of questions. And I am really in support of opportunities for our students and I appreciate that you're interested and willing to do this. So even though some of my questions are negative and realistic, I'm so excited about what you're willing to do and what you're interested in doing. And I hope that this works out.
Thank you.
But I think it might be smart to win.
Yeah, I just think that, that's an outstanding.
Yeah, I've got the questions out there already, it's going to ask, so just waiting for your response.
I mean, how is it handled? I mean, it sounds like there's a program that's, has some level of maturity, uh, in, like, like Superior School District.
Yes.
And, I mean, what, so we've got some insight.
So I asked the same questions of our, every time they say, hey, we're going here, all right? This is where they're going.
And, I mean, what, just generally speaking, I mean, what's sort of like the?
There haven't been any issues.
Like, and you, like, in terms of like?
Oh, just to share with you, so, um, trying to think. When did they, when was the bombing in Paris? Three years before?
Yeah.
That year, they were supposed to go to Paris and the board said no. And they had already paid for it. And so, uh, the board actually said, no, we're going to refund those kids. And what, we worked with that company and we actually got vouchers, which then were able to be used. That was where people bought the vouchers from the district and were able to use, so. were able to use, so. I'm just giving you an example, that happened. It was out, we're not sending our kids.
Well, thankfully, the kids weren't there when the bombing happened.
It was about there, close to a month away from going.
If I can jump in, I know, 'cause I was planning.
Were you there?
I wasn't there for this, but I was planning a trip with Gail that, that turned into this Greece trip once I moved here, 'cause we figured, oh, what a great opportunity to join our districts, and we talked a lot about that trip that she planned.
Yeah, Gail was part of that, that was her first trip.
Yeah.
Gail is who?
Gail Aru is, I'm sorry.
Spanish teacher. And I don't know who that is.
Gail Aru is the organizer, organizer of the trip. She's the Spanish teacher on the B two R O test.
Who her?
But she's the, she, we, when we looked at locations, we specifically, obviously, France is near and dear to my heart, but specifically because of that and how unstable it is right now, we, we are trying to look at safer locations is what we've been looking at, places that would be most likely to have, or least likely to be, you know, dangerous for our students, so that is a consideration.
I thought Greece was having some issue lately, but aren't we all?
Well, there are countries that have issued travel warnings about coming to the United States.
I don't mind them.
There's the, yeah.
There's that.
So, let's get a system that's great by the time my.
So, we will have this on, and if any of the board members have any other questions, please forward them to myself, and then I will get those out.
Thank you.
Thanks for your work.
Absolutely.
Okay, nine point zero, our administrative reports, nine point one, principals report highlight item.
We're just ending that interesting time here, we're, we're between breaks, right? So, you come back Thanksgiving break, and then it's before holiday break, and you're trying to keep all the kids focused, because then when we get back, we go full cylinder until the twentieth, and that's the midterm. So, you know, the highlighted item for me right now is that I'm meeting with a lot of seniors, and we're talking about college plans for next year, credit summaries, are you on pace, what do you need to get done before January twentieth? And so, that's the big thing in middle school, high school right now in my world is getting that all lined up to set seniors up for success. Mr. Shannon's been talking a lot about scholarships, and then we renewed our On the College subscription, which was formerly known as John Baylor Prep, which helps our juniors prepare for the ACT test, and so, we're working on that, and, you know, we're really just trying to keep kids focused through next Thursday, get into the break well, and get kids ready to finish the semester. In the elementary, we had the, what was scheduled for today was the planetarium was gonna come in and be set up in the ACA through UMD. They had, because of the weather, some delayed finals at UMD, so they didn't have the normal staff of college students, so they were unable to come up, so we're looking at reschedule the dates for that, 'cause that is something pretty popular and adds a tooth, so.
Great, thank you. All right, nine point two, superintendent report, highlight item.
It's not on my report, you can see my report's kinda glazé. Today, and I actually might get Pam and Lori to share, when our bowling team, the, where do they go, the Cool Cats left, could you describe what took place on the, their departure? It's, it's pretty neat to hear.
Give, give some history of how we know these kids so well.
Right. So, the kids bring down deposits into our office, Loop comes down, he loves to vacuum our office, so Melissa's class is, she uses their errands to her office as socialization skills and such. So, when I, Pam picked me up and gave me a ride to work today, I said, hey, we ought to give them a send-off, and I knew Terry was driving the bus, so I said, I knew what time the bus was coming. So, when we got to school, we brought it up to Melissa, and David Lipton was in the hallway and said, hey, I'll grab my class, and then Mr. McHugh also grabbed his class, and we had the hallway lined for them to send them off. And what I really enjoyed seeing were the other students, you know, athletes, scholars, everybody high-fiving all the kids on the bowling team, and the mentors that were going along, the high school students that were going along, walking arm-in-arm out with their kids on the team, and it was just really precious to see, and one of the guys, and I have no idea who it was, said, hey, Jessup, and then he was holding up his fingers and a heart when he was walking out the door, and, you know, those kids in those classes really showed support for their fellow, you know, and the kids in the, that were loading the bus, they were just like, some were being shy, some of them were being nervous, and others were hamming it up and getting the high fives and having a good time, so.
One of the little girls up there, he said, oh my God, I'm a cute.
But it was really.
So overwhelmed.
You know, Pam and I thought it was just gonna be us and a couple other people doing it, and then David brought, and Mr. McHugh brought their whole classes, so it worked out really well.
Well, it's nice to celebrate all of our students.
And then on the other hand, so they got back here on time, and the first thing they did was they came to the office.
To show us some joy.
And Lori said, oh, show, and then, then the young lady said, where's Ms. Pam? We had to go find Ms. Pam, show her the truck, which you guys saw.
Wonderful, yeah, yeah.
That's the highlight, that was just great to see.
Well, that's fantastic.
Need to hear about how our kids are supporting one.
Mm-hmm, very much so.
Great. Thank you. Well, that's a very nice share. Okay, any, anything else? Otherwise, somebody could make a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Great.
Second.
Second? Okay, all those in favor to adjourn at six thirty, seven PM, please say aye. Aye, opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. I think Pam has some stuff to sign, Lori, Pam.
Lori probably has some stuff to sign.
Signs, so welcome.
Remember to sign out.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, we'll see you.
Hey, Tom, how's it going? We ousted together.